This meeting to order on September 24th, 2019. Welcome everyone to the City Commission Meeting. And we're going to get started tonight with roll call please. Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight? Please stand.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are so blessed to be here tonight, together to do business for the city and we need your wisdom, your strength, your power, your discernment, your compassion as we make decisions. And we pray that you would give that to each one of the leaders here. Father, so often we take for granted those that serve us in our city and we just want to thank you for giving us professionals in the fire department, in the police department, in 911, in emergency services, those that are caring for us at the times we're most in need. We are so grateful and we pray you would continue to care for them and give them the skills, the training, and just take care of their families too, as they so often serve us selflessly. We also, Father, are so grateful for the many nonprofits that serve this community well and do such so much work. I would be remiss to name them all, but you do know them all. We pray you would continue to grant them wisdom and the funds that they need to take care of some of our most needy. And now, Father, as we do your business, we just pray that you would help us to do that in a way that honors your name. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. You may be seated. City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, great. And I'm going to ask if you'll lead us in the new employee introductions. I know we have quite a few here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First up, we'll have the Fire Department Chief Tinsley.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. We'd like to introduce you to our new eight recruits that have been training. They came back from the National Preparedness Center last week where they've done firefighter rescue training, firefighter survival training, high-rise fire training, and some various other trainings with gasoline fuels, things like that. So we've been having them busy. But first up, I would like to introduce Joey Harrell. Joey Harrell comes to us from another paid department. He has eight years in with the Career Department and is currently getting his EMT certification. The second one up is Steve Dorn. He comes to us with six years' experience from another career department. He is a firefighter paramedic. Next, we have Nathan King. Mr. King comes with us with two years' experience and he is also already a certified EMT. Kerry King. Kerry King comes to us as already a certified emergency medical technician. Dalton Lucas. He comes to us with six years' experience and is already a registered EMT. Matt Dalby. He's here with 14 years' experience and is already a registered EMT. Jonathan Kozner. He has two years' experience and he is currently enrolled in the EMT class. And Quentin Elbridge. He comes to us with a year's experience and he has already taken his EMT testing. And I will close by saying, the instructors that they had this past week, I've had the opportunity to work with these instructors from across the state for the past 10 years. And generally, they do not give high praise for their students. They are old school and they like workers. I received a phone call from one of the instructors from Hopkinsville Fire Department that said that Paducah has absolutely one of the best groups that he has seen come through that training facility in the past decade. They seem to have volunteered for everything. They were not the only department. Their other departments from across the state had members there. So I'm very proud that these people will perform their duties and do a good service to the community and citizens of Paducah. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Madam Mayor, next up we have the Police Department Chief Leder.
Mayor Commissioners, I wish I had eight employees to introduce to you. But I do have two and I'm proud to have them with us. First one is Victoria Jackson. She's been hired as a 911 telecommunicator. She's a graduate of Calumet County High School and she'll be attending the Telecommunicator Academy here in the coming months, as soon as we can get her enrolled. The second employee is Ricky Brandon. He's been hired as a police officer. He grew up in Idaho. He's a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. He's got five years' experience as a police officer in Nissah, Oregon. And he's approved by the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council to be a lateral transfer, so he doesn't have to go to the academy, so he just has to go through our training program. And we brought him here, we're trying to increase the population as well, so he's married with his wife and daughter.
Next up, we'll skip down to John with the Finance Department.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager. This is Erica Gibson. And Chief, you started off thunder by saying increasing population. Erica started just a few weeks ago, I guess actually a month ago, hasn't it been? It seems like she's been on this a long time. As a rugby technician one in the Finance Department, Erica is a 2014 Murray State University graduate. She's calm, smart, mature, positive person. She's eager to learn and we're glad we have Erica on board.
Madam Mayor, I'm going next for the Administration Department. Ty, you want to come up?
This is Ty Wilson. We hired him on board as our new grants administrator. Ty is a graduate from Western Kentucky University. He has his undergraduate degree in political science and economics. He has his master's degree in economics. We're glad to have Ty as a new member of our team. Him and his wife, of course, have relocated to the Paducah area from rolling grains, so we increased the population by two as well in Western Kentucky. They're originally both from the area, but his wife is from, I don't know, fancy farms. And he himself is from the Mayfield area, but not Mayfield, it is...
Wingo.
Wingo. But we're glad to have them here in Western Kentucky and glad to have Ty as part of our team.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Ty. All right, we're going to move into the consent agenda. And items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. I do have one to pull off for the City Manager. I am going to remove the personnel actions, I think it's what it's called.
That is correct.
Oh, F. We have a slight change to make to that. So before we move into that one, I'll get us the City Clerk to read the other items recommended for approval. Approved minutes for the September 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents. Approve appointment of Karen Petter to the Civic Beautification Board. This term shall expire July 1st, 2023. Approve reappointment of Carol Young and Patrick Perry to the Board of Adjustment. These terms shall expire August 31st, 2023. Approve appointment of Tamara Sanderson to the Civil Service Commission to replace Mari McGarvey, whose term has expired. This term shall expire December 9th, 2021. A municipal order accepting the bid for sale to the city of one front loader refuse truck in a total amount of $259,729 for use by the Solid Waste Division and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. Municipal order accepting the bid for sale to the city of three pickup trucks in a total amount of $74,694 for use by the multiple departments and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
I'm going to put the other action on the table and then, City Manager, can you explain? I move that the personnel actions for September 24th, 2019 City Commission Meeting be amended as follows. That the rate for the full-time new hire position of neighborhood project planner be amended to $18.12 per hour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have the error on the actual personnel actions as attached to the agenda was listed as $18.84 per hour. The actual rate is $18.12 per hour. That equates to the annual salary that she was offered for employment.
I need a second, I think. Second. Thank you. Take your pick. Any questions, comments about this issue? All right, roll call please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Abraham.
I move that a municipal order, and Ty, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies to remove certain services and to add the implementation of an agreement we adopted.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the contract amendment that we discussed at the last commission meeting, moving from the munis to the NRG for the codes and permitting. This is a unanimous recommendation of our ERP team. And so this is actually executing the contract so that we can begin project planning services and hopefully kick off after the first of the year. Do you have any questions?
This is related to the presentation that you gave?
Yes, IT Director Stephen Chino and myself.
Great.
Yes.
Any questions, comments for Michelle? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McElroy. All right. I think we need a vote. Oh, there's a vote? I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Roll call please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner McElroy.
Okay. Get comfortable. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance fixing the levies and rates of fixation on all property in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and for school purposes for the period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined. Purpose, and this will be a rate per $100. General fund of the city, real property .267, personal property .390, motor vehicles and watercraft .390. School purposes, Paducah Junior College, real estate .016, real estate .016, vehicle, personal property .016, motor vehicles and watercraft .031. The city of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. Paducah Independent School System, real property .864, personal property .864, inventory .864. Total tax rate per $100, real property 1.147, personal property 1.270, inventory .864, motor vehicle and watercraft .421. Property taxes levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of taxes which reflect an amount due of less than $850, the payment shall be due on November 1st, 2019 and should be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2019. In the case of all other tax bills, payments shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1st, 2019 and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2019. The second half payment shall be due on February 1st, 2020 and should be payable without penalty and interest until February 29th, 2020.
Any comments, questions tonight? Are you giving a presentation?
Yeah, that's not it. I like the name, though.
Looks very philosophical.
John Wilde. Well, while she's setting that up, we were asked to, well, I don't know what Commissioner McElroy just read, in really simple terms. And this would be applicable to a taxpayer that lives in the city and is in the city's school system. Thought it was loaded, so, anyway.
He'll get it for you.
Yeah, we'll get it here in a second.
I have a quick question, though, if you want.
Sure.
So last time we had talked, in the ordinance that was read previously, you had assumed the rate for the school system and they have since approved that rate. Is that true?
They have approved that very right. We thought they probably would, but sure as you say it, they wouldn't.
Yeah. And the other question I had was around the inventory tax. I know the county government has been talking a lot about inventory tax. We do not have an inventory tax from the city government's perspective, but Commissioner McElroy did read an inventory tax from the school.
That's exactly right.
So can you clarify?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Probably 20 years ago, the city and the county got together and said, "We are going to remove inventory tax on companies that carry inventory for, you know, ED reasons, economic development reasons." And so we both did that. And I think we phased that completely about the year 3, I forget, 2003, something like that. That's a tax on only companies that have inventory, like for instance, Walmart has inventory. That's what they sell. We wiped that out completely and we haven't had it ever since. That, if we were to have that today, that would be worth probably three quarters of a million dollars a year to the city in revenues. I understand that the county has, I think, passed property tax on that this year, this fall, so it's not the city, it's the county. And we collect for the junior high, rather, no junior, the PJC, they don't collect it either, but we do collect it for the Paducah Independent School System. It's not the city. It's, we collect it for them.
Okay.
John, we didn't even have that presentation. Okay.
You want to do it verbally, or you?
Well, I've got a backup here, hard copies.
All right. That's why he's the finance director. We can share.
Well, this was meant to be a PowerPoint, so some of it's going to seem kind of redundant on the PowerPoint. It wouldn't seem that way. So the very first page you have, it has a heading of 2018 and 2019. Those are the rates in those years, last year, this year. And the first page is the city of Paducah and you can see our rate was .261 and it's going to .267. That's, as Commissioner McElroy said, that's per $100 of assessed valuation, which is set by the PVA. Next page, you should have two lines, the city of Paducah and then the junior college. Their rate remains exactly the same. Third page would include the school system in a total. So for instance, you can look at, in 18, the school system's rate was 84 cents, and now it's going to be 86.4 cents. An increase of 2.4 cents. Now, bottom line, between the city and the school, it's going to go up 3 cents per $100 assessed value. Oftentimes, people, the next page should be green. This is how you calculate your tax bill. It's really pretty simple, but if you don't know how to do it, it's challenging. So if you know what your, in this particular example, we used, we said the house is worth $100,000, so whatever we come up with, you can, you know, equate it to any house. So you take the value of your house, divide it by 100, that's per $100 assessed value, and take it times whatever rate you want to apply, whether it's the city school, or the county, or whoever it is. The theory works exactly the same. So in this example, if you're in the city and in the city's school district, the rate for a $100,000 house for the city collection would be 1,0147. And then the last page, this is a question that people get confused about a lot. And I think we talked about it last time, we talk about it every year. The vast majority of what the city collects doesn't belong to the city, we simply collect it for the school system and the junior college. And as you can see, this year, 75.3% of what we collect goes to the city's school system. A small piece, 1.4, goes to the junior college, while we keep about 23%. So, but the check is made out of the city of Paducah, so that's why people get confused. I tried to, I wish we'd have hit on the PowerPoint, I'm not sure.
Are we going to be able to put this on the packet, maybe? The packet of the meeting, so that the public can see what we just saw? Is that okay?
For the archived junior.
We can.
It's okay, yeah.
Okay.
Did you, do you have the PowerPoint that you can give? Okay, well, you've got the original there.
Get the correct one to someone for the archived. Have Cory send it to me.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay. Thank you, John, so much. Actually, hold on. Does anyone have any questions or comments for John?
One question. There's a lot of talk out there about property not being assessed at the right value and property that is not assessed. So go ahead, John, and tell us what that means for us in the city as we look at the next year and as we try to help the PVA catch up on that.
Okay. Let's say that she had a house that she bought 20 years ago, and she paid $50,000 for it. And everybody knows houses have gone up. They do every year. And so apparently, there are some houses that were not reassessed as they should have been. I think, again, I'm not the PVA, but I've been around long enough, I've listened. I think what they have to do, they have to reassess the entire city at least once every four years. And so apparently, some property was not reevaluated properly. And so that would be the case of, if you bought a $50,000 house 20 years ago, it's probably worth $100,000, whatever it is, depends on the number of junior. Then there were, apparently were others that, for whatever reason, they just never were assessed at all, they never had an assessment. But if you have no assessment, whatever your tax levy is, times zero is zero. And so they never received tax bills, either from the county or the city. PVA has to provide that data to the city and the county, and we extend the levy against it. And that's all there is to it. So there will be some people this year, I think probably more next year, that will experience an increase in their tax bill because, not so much that the levy's gone up, but their assessed, the tax base will grow. And so if your house was assessed at 50 and it shouldn't have assessed at a quarter million, you're going to pay a little more. But that's, it's unfortunate that that happened, but it did. And so that's what you're referring to, I think.
Right. And then how, let's say next year, there's a, you know, there's, the total assessment for the city is a lot more. I know we're restricted in how much, so how would that affect us?
Right. The way that works is, in theory, if the tax base grows 10%, tax levy drops 10%. It's an inverse relationship. And so from that, there's a complicated formula where we have to come up with what they call the compensation rate, which means the revenue neutral rate. Once we come up with that, then the city or the county or whatever jurisdiction it is can take that neutral rate, take it about 104%, and that's the max you can do. So it's not like one day, your rate is 26 cents and then tomorrow it's going to be 50. You can't, you just can't. You could try, but there would be a recall. And unless you're just crazy, it takes months and months to go through a recall and we wouldn't be able to collect taxes at all. So I've never seen or read any place in Kentucky, maybe it has happened, but if you go beyond the 4%, you subject yourself to some harsh criticism and they can, people can start petition. I think it's like 10% of the last, the number of people that voted for governor in the last election, that's all it takes, to get on the ballot and then vote whether you want to accept it or not. Of course, if there's enough people that are going to say, "No, what do you think is right?", they're probably going to vote it down. And what do you do three or four or five months later when you have many of them collecting anything? And if it killed, like a school system, it would kill them, because that's their big revenue.
So the good news is that there is a possibility that the better the assessments get in the PVA office, the lower the levy per individual will get.
Over time.
Right.
Yeah. We're capped at the House Bill 44, it had been for years. The max can grow as 4%, unless your value goes up, but that's something totally out of our control.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
That is good. Anyone else have anything? No? Ready to vote? All right, roll call please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right. City Manager.
I think we have three things tonight, just one, just to make the announcement everybody already knows, but it's barbecue in the river week. So preparations are underway.
It is.
Yeah, so we had the multiple crews down there working, continue to work, prepare for that this weekend and looking forward to a great time on the river. Second thing I have is just to let the attending public know, as well as the Board of Commissioners, that Phase 4 of the Greenway Trail is basically wrapped up. What we're just doing is some fine tanning there. It's looking really good. Hoping to have the ribbon cutting scheduled soon. So we're hoping to get everything cleaned up, get it shipshape, if you will, and get people down there on it. So it's beautiful. Actually, got a chance to use it over the weekend, it's very nice. And then the last thing I have is talk about the agenda. I was mentioning last time, the public comments about being able to know where to find the agenda prior to the meetings, so people actually know what we'll be talking about at the meetings. And the City Clerk actually had a good suggestion of kind of pulling it up and showing people on the website where exactly it's at, not to turn it over to Lindsay.
So if you go to the City of Paducah website, which is padukaky.gov, if you're on the homepage, you can search for it by going under Government and Agendas, Minutes, packets, and Highlights. You'll find all of the ones that we have online for over 10 to 12 years or more. But if you just want to type in a URL, you can go to padukaky.gov/2019-city-commission. And that'll take you to this page right here. And then, these are all the ones for 2019, and you can go and click on the one that you want to take a look at. Another really neat thing that you can do now is come down to the bottom of this page. If you hit this login right here, it gives you an opportunity to put in your email and a password and set up an account so that you get notifications anytime an agenda is published. They're typically published on the Friday before the commission meeting. Usually that afternoon on Fridays is when you'll get a notification or you can go on and find them. So I thought it was a good opportunity, good suggestion, and a good opportunity to just kind of go over that so everybody knows where to find it. Thank you.
The last thing I have, Madam Mayor, is just to update the board that Michelle Smiley and myself will be at Covington tomorrow giving a presentation to the Kentucky League of Cities on the New Day Initiative and our customer experience department being able to share that with other cities throughout the Commonwealth. I'm pretty excited about that.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the Commissioners tonight?
We have just a couple. Wanted to give a shout out to a couple of organizations in our community that are celebrating anniversaries. Hope Unlimited is 30 years old this fall, and they do an amazing ministry there, way beyond just taking care of the unborn. They have tremendous parenting classes that are now ordered by our courts. When people need parenting classes, that's the ones they turn to. Also, life skills and work skills to help break the cycle of poverty. So they do an amazing job. It's also the 40th anniversary for our Paducah Symphony, and I think most of us have had that experience where we've been in a big city and we say something about our symphony and they'd look, "You have a symphony? We have a fantastic symphony." So they are celebrating 40 years and I think their Christmas concert tickets go on sale today. So I'm going to go home and do that. And then, thirdly, I just want to say, a personal project I am working on is to put in a music garden in Noble Park. And I am by firing up and uniting all the garden clubs in Paducah. And did you know there's 22? I'm not sure all of them are functioning, but we're finding out, and there's a lot of enthusiasm to put beautiful, high-quality outdoor instruments in Noble Park. If you look in the area between the lake and the amphitheater, you'll see a sidewalk enclosed area. And that's the area we're hoping to grab and put some beautiful benches, some native trees, and beautiful instruments that people can enjoy as they walk around the lake. I think you will find adults wanting to play them, but I'm super excited. If you are interested, we're in the fundraising phase officially today, and if you'd like to be a part of that, maybe donate something in honor of a child, a grandchild, a neighbor, and/or maybe a favorite music teacher. We would love to have you. You can find my address on that same website. Or if you know Molly Blythe, she's working on this project tirelessly as well. So thank you.
Thank you for that. That sounds fun. Anyone else?
Totally shifting gears. The two candidates for governor will be in
The two candidates for governor will be in Paducah a week from tomorrow, on October 3rd, for a luncheon at the Convention Center. You must pre-register, but we're expecting a very large crowd. I think it's important that we show to both of them that West Kentucky cares.
Yes, absolutely.
So I hope all of you will be there, there will be a reserved table if you would like to join it up front.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I did have a few things I wanted to share with you. I actually brought you, I think I might have given this to you before, but just to remind everyone about the Veterans Day celebration that we've been working on, along with WPSD and Milner &amp; Orr, along with the county government. Commissioner Jones is representing the county in our planning meetings. We have new sponsors on board, Mr. Dean Owen is sponsoring the breakfast. We also have Kisa Hausmann at Make Studio is sponsoring a thank you card station, and I still have to reach out to Smudge also for that. But that is the kind of overview of the day. The only event not listed there, because I didn't give you the updated, was the parade. So the parade still is on, it starts at 11:00 AM that day, but we have a lot, a full day of events. It starts with the sunrise service down on the water, I'm very excited about that, we're asking the Coast Guard to get involved. Actually, the symphony just texted me and said, "We have you a trumpeter for that moment." So that will be exciting. And then we go into a breakfast for veterans at 8:30 that morning, oh, sorry, 6:30 to 8:30 that morning, and then we'll have an award ceremony. And throughout the day, at the Convention Center, the 101st Sustainability Brigade is actually bringing equipment up for young people, old people, whoever wants to see that equipment, to experience the equipment. And they'll also have a van there that has a virtual reality studio, a rock climbing wall, so we have some really cool events going on that day. All of the service organizations are setting up booths to share what they do, how they support our community, so I think it's going to be a big day. And on your document I gave you, just a reminder, this really came from what the Wall That Heals really did bring to our community, and kind of this understanding that we had more work to do when it came to honoring our veterans during Veterans Day. So we will also be giving out Quilts of Valor, you might have heard of that program, Robert Warden runs that program here for us. We have five city employees that are receiving the Quilts of Valor this year, so that will be really exciting. I hope you all can join us for most of the day. We'll end the day with an army band concert, so the 101st Airborne has an army band. I think they play rock, but I think they have said we can request whatever we're talking about, whatever we want. So the community band will also be opening for them, so it should be a big day for Paducah.
Sorry?
I also wanted to mention our DC trip. I do, Commissioner McElroy and Commissioner, of course, Commissioner Wilson and her team at the Chamber lead that effort. Jim also was able to join us in DC, and I keep hearing over and over again, it was one of the most productive trips that we think we've had, and I think we're going to continue to see the fruits of that labor. I know the airport's waiting to hear some good news, and...
They did hear it.
They did hear it. Great, so they are getting a grant to help with the design and engineering of a new terminal.
2.2 million, they, was announced, I believe, yesterday by Secretary Chow.
Great.
Awesome.
Excellent. We showed up. We asked for it.
Two for three, so far. I'm still waiting on the third request, but that was there.
Yep, that's great. And then also, I just wanted to share with you, we had a neighborhood walk last night in Fountain Avenue. It was the Fountain Avenue French Town Station Neighborhoods, and it went really well. I was very impressed with the organization. There were a lot of Fountain Avenue residents that knew each other, and they are organized. So we highly encourage them to consider a neighborhood association, I think that's been in the works for a while, but to pull the trigger on that. We learned a lot about some small things. Lang Park, of course, the issue of lighting was mentioned, and we got to share with them that we're working on that solution. It did, the sun started coming down as we were ending, and I noticed that it was definitely very dark out there. They're also in need of some more of the doggie stations, they had a few get knocked